I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. First off, I would like to welcome Carlos Rinoza, who is our new board member replacing Lee Crouch, who resigned last month. Carlos, we are very happy to have you welcome aboard to the Board of Education. And Christine Cassone is back, and we'd like to congratulate her on the birth of her baby, Ava, who's just, what, a month old now?
A month tomorrow.
A month tomorrow.
Congratulations.
Welcome back. Congratulations. Jeff Gutman is running a little late. He'll be here shortly. George King's father is in the hospital. He called, so he's not going to be with us this evening, so we send our best wishes out to his dad on a speedy recovery. He did indicate to me that he is going to call in, so somewhere we have a phone for the budget portion of tonight's meeting. All right. And that's all I have to report tonight, and that's more than usual. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Thank you, Mr. Gutman, from the audience. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Monaco. I have a motion by Mr. Gutman, a second by Mrs. Monaco, to approve the consent agenda. Do I have any discussion on that? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We will move on to reports of the committees and liaisons, and we will start with our Massey Board representatives.
Hello, everyone. Well, this Thursday, January 7th, is Alumni Day, where freshmen in college come back to Massey, and they talk to the juniors and seniors. It's great because they answer any questions that we have, for example, anything about the admissions process, or what they did differently in high school, or anything about college life, which is really great. It's a good resource for us. And also, January 7th, a representative from FAFSA is coming to help senior parents fill out the student financial aid forms, so that's good, because that is a lot of forms, and it takes a lot of work. And also, on Thursday, the Massey Choir has a chorus concert.
The next Wednesday, the 13th, will be College Funding 101, and that's for juniors and lower, which essentially just tells the parents how to start saving money for college and whatnot, and how to go about that process. That next Friday, the 15th, midterms start, and quarter two ends the 14th. And tomorrow is the Massey Swim Team's first home meet against Brookfield. We would all like you to join at four o'clock.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have any other committee reports this evening?
John, do you need to speak to policy here, or just wait until the --
No, and I believe that would probably be George.
Hello, George. Okay, I'm going to put you on speaker. Can you hear us okay, George?
I can, thanks, Jim.
Can everybody around the table hear?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right, thanks for being here, George.
Does anybody have any other committee reports before we move on? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. All right, seeing nobody in the audience, we will accept our own administrative staff, not nobody, but we will move on to then the report of the superintendent.
First off, I'd like to thank the administrative staff for being here. They like to come. Even if I say that your presence really isn't necessary for final discussions on the budget before the board is forced into making a decision of what budget you're going to go forward with, they still come out strong every time to support whatever it is we do with the budget. So at the last meeting, we had been talking about two possibilities occurring from the previous budget. We had a 2.43 percent budget was where we were two weeks ago or so. We since have gotten an additional retirement at Jockey Hollow. We can save $48,000. We do have to backfill that position, but we could backfill it with a less seasoned teacher and save $48,000 for that. And we did talk with Jay Fiorillo from Ovation. He and Cigna had been in constant discussion, really, all fall, about the original number that they had given us. If you remember, they were telling us originally to budget $500,000 increase to our medical benefits, and the reason for that wasn't because more people were using the benefits, it was that the cost of the benefits themselves, the cost of the services, was increasing so dramatically over time. So consequently, they had said 500,000. They then came back, and, you know, after a careful look, they got a couple more months of data in on our reserve fund, and they're recommending now that we take out $205,744 from that 500. And that brings us, those two items, the early retire -- I'm sorry, the retirement and the reduction in our medical expenses brings us down to a budget of 1.96. And at this time, I am not comfortable going any lower than 1.96 at this early stage of the game. You know, the potential exists for Ovation's to come back to us in a month or two months and say, you know, maybe you can take a little bit more off of the projected increase, but I'm not willing to do that now. There's still -- what happens in our medical costs in the reserve fund is that in the beginning of the year, people are paying out of their HSA and their deductible. When the deductible gets used up, that's when the medical reserve starts to get hit. And so you do see a spike in activity come the springtime. So we want to be careful. We don't want to be in a bad spot with the medical reserve fund years to come. We have made great strides in managing that fund with the Board of Finance help in determining the range that we'd like to keep that in, and so that's where we are right now. The only other thing that's not in this budget, and I just want to make sure that the board, if we're going to have a discussion about the budget, that this is on the table, and that is that we have those three, I'm sorry, yeah, the three oil tanks, two Monroe L. and Stepney oil tanks that have to be removed this coming summer, in the summer of 2016. Massey is scheduled to have their tank pulled in 2017. Okay, our suggestion, and I did propose this to Mike Manjos directly, was that these should be bonded projects, okay, spread out over some period of time, not a one-shot operational budget kind of a thing. So we did not include the cost of those projects in this budget. So we're at risk here. If the town does not go forward with the bonding for those projects, we could be in a bad situation. We have no choice but to pull those tanks. It is the law, 25 years, they have to come out of the ground. It's a wise thing to do anyway, because if you did get a leak in this day and age, you'd be spending really crazy money to remediate the spill. So you want to avoid that at all costs. So there's the big risk. The big risk is those oil tanks. I think the other thing, you know, that I'm hopeful, and, you know, maybe with the mild winter so far, you'd never know it tonight, but maybe we can make some savings in some energy costs this year, because we have that F-550 truck. We're not sure it's going to make it through the end of the year. That's an $80,000 problem that we have, that we're wrestling with, and so we'll just have to kind of watch that. There's some discussion that maybe we can bond that as well, but that will remain to be seen with the town. And lastly, I think the only other issue with budget, and it's more an issue with this year's budget than next year's budget, is this ongoing problem that we've had at Monroe L. First of all, our crew, custodial crew over there, Bill Trosco, Al Mosey, and those guys did a bang-up job. They worked all week. They even worked on New Year's Day down in those trenches to solve the problems that we've been having with that leak. What happened is that the, once they repaired the leak on the condensation pipe, those pipes have not been used to having full pressure anymore, okay, and they're very corroded pipes, so they sprained a couple more leaks. So we're going to replace a whole length of pipe now, just to be on the safe side, because you can see it, it's just splashing out of the pipe. And the photographs that we have of the pipe now, these pipes were probably jacked, were they original, they 1938 pipes?
As far as we can gather, here's what they are.
Yeah, and they're laying in the floor of the tunnel on the dirt, okay? So the bottom side of these pipes are very corroded, and, you know, we had to go for the asbestos abatement during that week. Once the air quality was tested, the plumbers got in there, mechanical got in there and replaced sections, repaired sections, and we're waiting for a couple more parts, and then we'll do that whole line from the boiler room to the back of the building. But that was an unexpected expense that we're going to fund this year out of emergency building repair, right, Gabby?
Yes, that's what it's there for.
Yep. So, you know, there's always those unknowns that happen, and preparing a budget for a year hence has all of those same unknowns in it, you know, and we keep our fingers crossed. You know, we did fairly well with last year's budget. It was a harrowing experience towards the late spring. We were getting a little bit worried, but we got through. And this budget that we prepared for next year is also a lean budget, but it gets us everything that we need to do. The vast majority of it, if you remember from our presentation, is in our human resources, you know, between contractual and medical and those kinds of things. We offset a lot of that by controlling what we're backfilling on the retirements. We're trying to use attrition to shrink our staff, and we've been consistently doing that. So with that, I'll leave it open to questions. The administrators are here, Gabby's here, and certainly I can answer any questions that anybody has, but our recommendation, my recommendation to you is a revised budget of $54,861,767, or a 1.96 percent increase over this year's budget.
Jeff, do you have a question?
Yeah, bonding. Do we have any things that are coming to an end that we're paying on now?
My understanding is that the town is retiring some bonded debt this year. Gabby, do you know more?
It's about $4 million that they're retiring. I don't know off the top of my head what it specifically relates to. I think the next pieces that are being retired that have to do with the schools would be the debt associated with the Jockey Hollow construction project, but that's probably not for a few more years, because that, if I recall correctly, those bonds were actually refinanced at a lower rate at one point, so they might be going out for a few more years.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions on the budget?
No, I'd like to say something, though.
Sure.
I'm just going to echo what I said two weeks ago about, or three, how many months ago?
Two weeks ago.
About the budget and the process, and how, you know, with Ovation's help, and I'm sure you did some pencil sharpening too, to come up with the 1.96 over last year's budget, over this year's budget, I think it's a very good start. You know, the 2.43 came out, we all know what's going to happen with that, it's just going to get shot down regardless, and, you know, well understood. So I just want to thank Jim, and John, and Gabby, and the administration for doing their jobs and really looking out for the best ones for the taxpayers of the world.
Well, thank you, Jeff, I appreciate that. The board and the town has my promise that, you know, if we can find any other wiggle room along the way, we'll take full advantage of it.
I still say we put John in Gabby's office.
I'm not saving it.
Then we'd have personnel issues. We'd have to mitigate in court.
All right, anybody else have questions or comments on the budget? Great. Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the 2016-17 Board of Education budget as presented, which is a budget of $54,861,767, or a 1.9 percent increase over this year's spending?
1.96.
Sorry, 9.6. Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, I have a motion by Mrs. Monaco, a second by Mr. Martinez, to approve the 2016-17 Board of Education budget as presented. Anybody have any discussion on that?
I'd just like to remind George King on the line. George, when it comes to a vote, it's important for you to state your name and your vote. Are you still with us, George?
I'm with you.
Okay, great.
All right, all in favor?
George King, I vote in favor.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We will move on. Do you have anything else under superintendent's report? All right, we will move on to item eight, which is presentations, which is going to be a presentation on Board of Education duties. John, I'm taking it that you're --
Yeah, Jim and I are going to do this together today.
And you're using the screen?
Yes, and there's a packet in front of each place, and I have some extras if you want to come up with a bag.
John, I'm going to drop.
All right, George, thank you.
Thanks.
Want water? No. Anything else?
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to start off with. I have read this, this Board of Ed Professional Development tonight with a couple of comments, one of which is, this is actually a very timely presentation, because we have four new board members, and that hasn't happened in a while. And even though John and I have met with all of the board, the new board members as they became board members, it's still great to have this kind of a conversation and talk about board roles and responsibilities and that. The second thing I think that's really important is that this professional development series that we've been doing for the past year, right, year and a half, was born from the Board of Education. You guys said, "We want some professional development. We want to be informed about the things that are going on in the school district." And it has been a great thing for us to work on and to do these professional development activities. They're, you know, somewhat informal, but I think the content is good. I think the information that you walk away with is very useful in your role. So, you know, this is all part of what you do as a board, which brings me to my third comment, and that is, you know, some of the things that you're going to hear and see today, or hear today, tonight, you'd say, "Wait, the superintendent's telling me how to be a board member?" You know, we don't do that, and you're right. There's one packet, for instance, here, 10 mistakes that board members make. I'm going to mention it later in the presentation. I have never worked for a board that is almost completely devoid of these mistakes that we're going to talk about. This board, you guys have been extremely, extremely good to work with, and respectful and responsible in the role that you play, and I want to congratulate you upfront. You've taken this job very seriously, and I don't see the things that many boards around the state of Connecticut complain about. So, you know, please keep that part of it as a grain of salt, okay?
And Cabe does, Cabe will do presentations like this to the board, but because every, you know, the board works really well together, Jim and I thought we could kind of share it and not have to bring Cabe in to do that for, you know, a two-hour-long presentation. We could do it rather quickly. The other thing is, the last couple of years, we've gotten suggestions from the board on what PD you would like to see, and so for the new members, if there's a topic that you want us to discuss, if you could let, you know, Don or Jim know, then we can bring that. We try to do one a month, some kind of PD, one a month. We did FERPA one year, we did, we had the person come in to talk about freedom of information. So anything that you're interested in, we can certainly do that.
The first thing, your duties and responsibilities as board members is founded in the Connecticut General Statutes. In your packet tonight, you have a copy of that. It's Section 10-220, Duties of the Boards of Education. This law was actually founded, or not founded, but it was actually begun in 1650 in Connecticut. So almost 100 years or more before, you know, we became our own nation, and we already had Connecticut laws. And I'm always very fond of reminding board members that although you're elected locally, okay, you're elected to carry out the duties expected of the State Board of Education as well. So although you're a locally elected official, you're really serving in the capacity as a state official as well. And that's all right in the statute itself, in the first couple of lines. Because in one point here, it says, "The board is to implement the educational interests of the state as defined in Section 10-4A." So when you go through all of those responsibilities, like making sure that there's adequate instructional books, or the equitable allocation of resources, and the proper maintenance of facilities, all of those bulleted items that come from the statute, okay, are all directed from the state, basically. And so you're representing the local interests and the people that elected you as the officials, but you have this other layer that guides you in the form of the state. You want to add to that, John?
We took the liberty to just take this law, 220A, and we just summarized some of the important parts of it. So the first section really talks about your duty is to maintain a good public school by implementing what Jim said about the state. But I was surprised to see, or happy to see, what it included. So you have to make sure that there's appropriate allocations for instructional supplies, for equipment, for technology and facilities. Those were really, they're specific in the law, what you have to do.
Transportation of students, for instance, is in there as well. One of the big ones is to develop goals, okay, which you guys have taken very, very seriously, you know, and we're in our second round of goal-setting, and we're really doing a great job in really understanding what it is we want the district to accomplish going forward. So, you know, you're certainly living up to that. Examination of data is one of those things as well, okay? You think back to the, you know, every fall, we do the assessment review, the graduation rates, and all of those other things that John usually walks you through to understand, are we being successful in the job that we're set about to do? Quality, we have to conduct quality air inspections, air quality inspections. Establishment of a curriculum committee was a new one. That's one of the latest additions to this statute, because it was in that legislation just a couple of years ago that established the new teacher evaluation process, and you had to have a curriculum committee to do it, and PD merged, right, John?
Yes, we merged them together.
Okay. And then we have to have our procedures and processes for reporting child abuse and any suspected child abuse as well.
So those are things that are specific in the law. And then because we are part of Cabe, Cabe put, and this is in your book also, Cabe put on roles and responsibilities of board members. And we kind of went through this and summarized some of those things, some of the things that you do very well, and we thought we'd share some of those with you. And this is what Jim talked about, you know, you're a state and a local official. And then there's this whole part about meeting legal and professional qualifications, and that's what it is. And basically, that's just that you can't be employed by the board, and you have to live in the town. So those are the two things that it talked about when it talks about legal and personal.
And one of the other points I think we make pretty well in our little orientation session with new board members is that alone, a Board of Education member really has no authority in the school district or over anybody, but it's when you're in this format and are, you know, taking votes, that you speak with one voice, you actually take on that role of leadership. So that's an important distinction.
Policies next, and policy's really an important subcommittee of the board, and we meet all the time, and we talk about a lot of policies, but that's kind of your role, is to see the big picture, make policies for the big picture. And then it's our role to implement those policies with regulations. So you don't vote on the regulations, you vote on the policy, and then you are either happy or not happy with how we implement the policy that you vote on. And so that's really, looking at the big picture is really important for the board.
And I think, you know, one of the big ones too, and, you know, this is true of every Board of Education, is your responsibility to secure adequate funding for the school district. You know, you do that through the superintendent, through the team here, but you're also that voice that's out there in the public, saying, you know, "We studied this budget, we understand this budget, and, you know, we need the funds to do this in order to carry on the kind of quality education that you've come to expect in town."
They had a point, they have something called growth in service, and once we got delved into it and really looked at it, that's really what you do. It's to be really informed about all the aspects of what's going on in the school system so that, you know, you know, we had the book reads the last couple of years. You kept current, you're keeping current on information in the education sphere. So that's really, you guys are great at this, because we have the PD, we did the book reads the last couple of years, and hopefully we'll do book reads again, and it seems to work out.
And then you have a direct responsibility in curricular leadership as well, and we try to involve you as much as we can in that process. Unfortunately, a lot of that happens in the course of the work of the day, but Alan is your member on curriculum this year, and every time there's a change that's of significance, it comes through the Board of Education. I think the best example was the new math resources that we walked through all of last year. If you remember, that was a lengthy process, and you guys worked very well with us in understanding the complications of that and the implications of it, and ultimately, we're starting to really see the fruits of that hard work in our classrooms today.
And then the other thing that Cabe did for us was to look at the Code of Ethics for Board of Education. They really came up with this, and they said that in 1997 is when they first developed this model for boards. And so we're just going to give you a quick synopsis of what your Code of Ethics that Cabe said should be for board.
And that first thing is the well-being of students. That's the fundamental goal. It's what our students are doing and what we're all about. And I remind everyone that's associated with the district in terms of employment that every role here is centered around supporting students. My role is to support students. John's role is to support students. Every custodian, every paraprofessional, every bus driver, it's all about what you're doing for the kids of Monroe. That's our job. Everything else is secondary to that support, really. And you're a staunch advocate for all students. They like if you honor all the national, state, and local laws.
And I think the staunch advocate, the key word here for me is all students. You're just not picking, you know, one kind of student, just, it's all of our students, and all of them need our support.
Clear and appropriate communications are so important. I think that the times have certainly changed. We really are in a fishbowl these days. We're on TV right now, our minutes are posted, our agendas are posted. Any information that's of any substance is typically linked on webpages and fully accessible. You know, things like Instant Messenger and all of those things really have created a very different environment than when I started my career in education. I mean, getting information back then was a challenge, I'm sure, for community members, but I see that as nonexistent today in terms of how clear and obvious all of that information is.
You know, professionalism, honesty, how you conduct yourself at these meetings, I think, you know, that says a lot to the community.
Representing the entire community is a tough one. And, you know, I served on a Board of Education for four years back in the early 90s, and so I do have a sense of how difficult it is sometimes as a board member, because you're living in the community, you're rubbing shoulders with friends, and just acquaintances, and everyday citizens in town. And people feel a need to sometimes kind of latch on to you and say, you know, how happy they are about something, right? But that's not usually the case, right? Usually, when they talk to you, it's because they're unhappy about some issue. And one of the things that you have to, and I think the whole bunch of the next bullets here kind of come into play here, is that it becomes incredibly difficult for you to take a position as an individual on the board take a position as an individual on the Board when somebody makes a complaint. Because you've got to hear through the whole process. We have to understand all of the community's feelings about things that are going on and really understand that whole thing, and then work through me or through the superintendent as your agent to handle those items. We don't want you, as individuals, to get into a situation that's hard to defend, or you might make promises that you can't keep because you don't have, the Board is not speaking, you know, entirely of the same mind as you on that one issue.
And you really are the educational leaders. You make policy, you support the teachers, you support the superintendent and the rest of us. So you are the educational leaders of the district. And, you know, it talks about making your decision fair and without bias. And that's hard to do sometimes because we all have our backgrounds and our biases. But I think as we talk, I've seen issues around this table where we've kind of talked it out and talked it through, and people make the best decisions that come out of it.
So 10 mistakes that Board of Education make, or Board of Education members can make. Before I kind of just highlight a couple, well, I'll highlight all of them. I won't say much about each one, you can read the information that's there. When I was going for my superintendent's certificate, we worked as a cohort, there was probably 10 of us in the cohort, and we traveled around on Saturdays throughout one of the school years that was in the process. And you met with different superintendents and you talked to them about their issues or one of their pet projects that they've got going and how they're ferreting it through. In that time, the number of horror stories that I heard, it makes you sit back and say, "Do I really want to become a superintendent with all these things?" And like I said in the beginning, I don't see much of that here, which is just astounding. But I have seen videotapes of Board of Education meetings where people have actually, you know, get into shouting matches, they're red in the face, they're actually standing up toe-to-toe as if they could go at each other, and really behaving very poorly. And like I said, I feel blessed to be in a situation where that kind of thing is just not happening. It's just not a part of who we are as board members. But one of them is, you know, one of the mistakes that board members will have is a lack of patience. You know, a project might be slow-going, or something might be moving through the process, and there is a process, and we kind of pride ourselves on being collegial. Being collegial means it takes time sometimes to get to solutions because you want to get everybody's opinion and weigh in and that kind of thing. So it's really important to be patient and work with the process. You know, you look at our RFP processes and contract negotiations, and none of this stuff happens overnight. The poor behavior, the temper tantrums, use of off-color language and throwing things and things, again, you know, this is not something that you guys do, so. Challenging the Board after a vote, and again, I haven't seen this with you, but this is a very common problem in many Boards of Education where once, it's important that everybody, their voice is heard when votes are taken, okay? And you may feel very strongly about something, and it is your right and your responsibility to voice the concern that you have, okay? But once the Board takes a vote, and if the vote goes against what you were thinking, it's really a board member's obligation to go with what the Board had decided. Because once the vote is over, that's the way the Board is going, and we should all be on board and move forward with that. Acting like a Lone Ranger. Sometimes people will see themselves as the overseer for the Board of Education and, you know, pop into situations, you know, school business, you know, looking for gotchas. That kind of thing is what they're referring to here. Sometimes not being able to see the forest because of the trees, that's kind of related to what I was just talking about. We oftentimes have to look at the big picture, okay? Unfortunately, there are, the statistics and how we're doing are important, okay? And when you get, like, you take our SBAK scores this year, for instance, you know, in some of our grade levels, we were so good, we were in the top 10, in the top 3, in the top 1 in one case, in the state of Connecticut, okay? But there were still kids who did not pass that test, right? And so, you know, we have to look at the forest, we're doing well, and let's not lose sight, though, of the trees as well. Dropping a bomb at a Board meeting, that's usually a gotcha thing, okay? That's something that somebody would throw out, you know, challenging somebody else on the Board just to embarrass somebody. And the superintendent doing that also to you could be a problem as well, and I hope I never do. Voting along party lines and putting politics before children goes back to one of the first things in the state statute, and that is to serve the interests of the students in the town. So once you're, once we're on a Board like this, you know, party lines and that kind of thing can really get in the way of good decision-making. And you want to be careful, you want to guard against that, and make sure that, you know, the children are first and foremost in all of your decision-making. And then there's becoming a ball carrier for people with hidden agendas or having your own hidden agenda. You know, we all come to these positions with something that's a pet peeve perhaps or of special interest. You know, you might be interested in the facilities, you might be interested in the curriculum, you might be more interested in the contract negotiations, you know, but you have to play in all the fields, okay? Even though you might have one particular area that you're most passionate about. Executive sessions and speaking out publicly about confidential items, again, I haven't seen that as a problem here. So I just don't see it here. And put the Board above family and business. You know, it's important that we all keep our perspective about what it is gives us our greatest joy and reward in life. And the Board is a very important thing, but it should never take precedence over what you do with your families and the other things.
And the last thing we put in there is just to gloss your terms. We use a lot of the alphabet soup in education, you know, we use a lot of jargon, and this just helps in case we do something and we don't, you know, don't give you what they, you know, describe it fully for you. So that's kind of what we put together, some of you saw it in the packet that we gave you from CAE, but we wanted to just share it as part of the PD this time.
And CAE has really been wonderful in supplying us this kind of information. I mean, you know, they're quick to update things as the state statutes change, especially in regards to the policy stuff. I mean, John's management, you know, I'd like to congratulate John and George King for their management of the Policy Committee and all the work that's in there. But, I mean, every second Board meeting, they're focused on policies for the past, what, four or five years now?
We're just going right down the list.
Going right down the whole list. I mean, you can't ask for cleaner and more up-to-date policies than what you've established here.
So, yeah, I don't know. I feel the need to ask after our last discussion last week, the reason why this came up was residency. Was anything ever found out about what the term residency, how Connecticut sees it, or is it, is it the way Monroe sees it, or is it the way we as a Board of Ed see it?
This PD was not born out of last meeting's residency issue. This was, these were, we have the, we have an agenda for the whole year of all of these PDs. It is timely. It is timely, there's no question, but it's not, it was not the purpose behind this, okay?
But was there anything ever, was there anything ever found out about that?
No, the policy, the law talks about being an elector in the town. So, you know, it doesn't really say what residency is, or we couldn't, I couldn't find anything anyway.
I mean, the closest thing was the Town Charter, which said that you had to be a resident of town, okay? So I know that the distinction that's made, you know, in referenda votes, for instance, you can vote in a town referenda if you don't live there, if you hold property there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
At least a thousand dollars on the grant.
So you could do that. But the way the Charter reads is that you need to be a resident, okay? Now, what is that, what causes someone to be a resident here? Does it mean you sleep here every day? Does it mean you own a home and travel?
I don't think it's owning property because you could rent here.
That's right, you could rent, that's right.
An owner occupied property.
Right, right. So, I mean, that was a questionable thing, clearly, some gray in there.
That's gotten a little gray.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, that was a wonderful presentation.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Alan.
I like the behavior contracts. We use those with little kids in the schools.
There were a few statements that Board members can make when people want them to make decisions, so they gave you, memorize this, it talks about what you could say to a citizen who says, "I want you to do this for me."
And I think that statement is actually a very good one in there, and it's not a bad one to practice because it can keep you out of getting yourself into an awkward situation, so.
And we've had a lot of experience on this Board where, you know, you give us a call and say, you know, "Somebody had this problem, I told them to contact the superintendent or contact you if it was policy or whatever," and you let us know, just give us a heads-up. I think that happens more than not, that you tell them to call us.
And the whole, you know, the hierarchy structure that we have, very often, you know, I, somebody will jump over a building principal, for instance, a parent might jump over a building principal with a problem. And typically, I say, you know, "I'm going to hear," they call me up, I say, "But I'm going to hear, I want to understand what your problem is," okay? But I really would appreciate if you went back to the building principal to discuss it. And then if you're not satisfied with what happened there, then give me a call back. And I'm going to be the one to have the principal call you too, okay? So if that doesn't happen in a timely fashion, call me back and tell me as well, and then I'll follow up on it. But it's, we settle the problems usually much more efficiently the closer you are to where the problem occurred. I'm sure many of you have seen the swing set that was designed by various people, if people could help me out with it. But it shows a swing set of a swing on a tree, okay? And there's like 10 different pictures of it. And what the kids wanted was a swing on a tree that went back and forth with ropes. And then they showed a picture of how the parents designed it, and it would show that the limb was cut off and the swing was on the ground. And then they showed it as the, maybe as the, an engineer would do it, and it had all kinds of props and different things holding up the branch so the branch didn't break, et cetera. And, you know, what did the kids want? They wanted this swing that worked. And it was solved, the kids could have solved the problem. It was only when the adults got into the action that we didn't solve the problem very effectively. So I always love that picture and that analogy. So the closer to the bone, the closer to the problem that you can solve it usually is the most effective.
Anybody have anything else?
I just want to make a comment that as a school administrator, I have been, I have attended Board meetings in several districts. And this is by far the most civilized Board I have ever witnessed. And I say that, you know, with all sincerity because I've seen how students become casualties over a period of time, and even from years ahead when a Board of Ed does not work, you know, professionally and civilly. And I honestly, I'm very impressed with, I'm only here four months, and very impressed with, and I think it's a testament to your leadership as well, the relationship you have with the Board, and seeing all the administrators here tonight, that are present tonight, again, it's all in the spirit of the commitment for kids. And like I said, I've seen the opposite, and it has a very devastating effect on kids. And so Monroe was very fortunate to have this group.
There's something very special happening in Monroe.
No question.
Okay? There really is, and it's a culture, it's a collegiality, it's a culture, it plays out in all of our school buildings, it plays out here. It's really quite something. Thank you for what you do.
I just wanted to ask them a bit about these comments. As students.
Yeah, we think the Board does a good job, they're very thorough with everything for the presentations, and they should answer the questions. Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, I think the Board's great, and I just always keep our needs in mind sometimes.
Great. Thank you.
There is no old business, so we will move on to new business. Item A is to set the date for the Board of Education self-evaluation and also the superintendent's evaluation. And just background to new Board members, every year the Board of Education uses a form which John is going to find and send out to all of us that fills out, we fill it out, it will ask different questions, it'll ask different ratings on how we feel as a Board where we're doing in specific categories. We will send that back to John, John will compile it, and then we will meet as a group to discuss the results of our self-evaluation, and we do that annually, and try to work on ways to improve different things that come out through that self-evaluation. And then the superintendent's evaluation, I'm going to look, and John is also going to look for the form because the one that we used last year when we sat down and discussed was not the right one. I think we used the CAE one, so we're going to go back and figure it out and find it. We will again get that out to everybody so that you guys can start compiling Jim's performance. And then we will meet as a group and have a executive session with Jim, and then we will meet privately to go over the evaluation, and then we will meet again with Jim to present that evaluation once we finalize it and we're happy with it to present to Jim. So we're looking, so we're going to talk about dates for those two things.
There were a couple of problems with the way I presented this on the agenda, I just want to clarify it. First of all, there's a problem with the date because the next Board meeting is the January 19th, not the 16th, okay? So I might have an error there. That's one problem. The other problem is that you cannot have, you can't just have an executive session, you have to go into a meeting where there is an item on an agenda, and you can say on that item that executive session anticipated, but you have to vote in the meeting to go into executive session, okay? So there's two ways that we could do this. We could choose a date to do this by, and it doesn't have to be the 19th, it could be a February date too. I wouldn't go much further out than February, though. But we could also, the reason why the 19th looked good is because we could actually have a special Board of Education meeting at 6:30 that evening because there's no committee meetings ahead of time. Have an agenda item that says, you know, "Board of Education self-evaluation, Superintendent's mid-year evaluation, executive session anticipated for that special meeting, conduct the meeting." Or we could add it to that evening's agenda and have it, and then go into an executive session there. The only reason why I was thinking of the before and doing it as a special meeting is to keep the evening to the short side for you guys, you know, not go as late. So that was the only reason why I was kind of poking it out there at the 6:30 time. So it's really your call.
That's a nice question.
Sure.
So for January 19th, would you want all the responses back and compiled by then?
See, I would say that's probably not realistic.
Okay.
Especially for the self-evaluation. I mean, certainly for the superintendent, really that meeting would be John sending out the, or myself sending out the form, everybody kind of thinking about it, jotting down notes, us meeting with you in executive session, you going over anything that you'd like to present as we've done in the past, and then us sitting down and actually going through the, us compiling the evaluation. So for the superintendent, I think we're good for the 19th to do that, whether it's at 6:30 or it's it's at six thirty or it's during the course of the meeting. Probably for the self-evaluation, we probably need to look out a little bit further because that, I would say, by the time we get that out, it is kind of a little lengthy to write. Some, some you can, some, some people just circle numbers and don't write comments, some people write comments, so to compile that and try to do that that same night, I, I don't think that's, I don't think.
The next time we have a board meeting that does not have committee meetings prior is March seventh.
Right.
Would it be okay if we did this electronically, like on Google Forms and I could send it to everybody, they could?
Sure.
Everybody okay with that since we're going paperless? All right, I, I'll look for that, what we did yesterday, I'll show it to you and then we can go from that to Google Form.
Right. So I think for, so for the superintendent's evaluation, I think the nineteenth is okay, Alan.
I found the superintendent's evaluation form.
Oh, perfect. Perfect, thank you so much. So I will get that out then and that was probably my thing clicking. I will get that then out tomorrow. So I think for the superintendent's, I think we can, I, I think we're good for the nineteenth.
Are we gonna do it at six thirty or are we gonna keep a light agenda?
We could do, we could, we could keep a light agenda and do it in the board meeting.
You want, we want to do that?
We need to vote on in the next couple of weeks.
No.
No policies that are going through the budget, the budget right now.
Is everybody good with that? We'll do it as part of the meeting and keep the agenda light and then just meet at seven thirty? Perfect. All right. And then, so you said March seventh would be the next one, that there's no committee reports?
Correct.
Is everybody good then with the self-evaluation being March seventh?
And do that at the six thirty or do you want to build it into the board meeting?
What does everybody want to do? I'm open to what everybody prefers. Do we want to build it in or do it before?
I could just keep a light agenda again and just have it be.
Do it as, as part of the meeting?
In the meeting?
Okay. Perfect. So we will get those out to you. Once I get home this evening, I will, or tomorrow morning, either tonight or tomorrow morning, I'll send out the superintendent one so we can, you can start looking at that and we can be prepared for that for next time. Great.
Great.
All right. Item B is policies first review. Since George is not here, I'm gonna let John talk about it.
Okay, the, the first policy is policy five one three one point one and that's bus conduct. And again, we are going down our list of, of five thousand policies, so this is the next one on our list. We did see, um, one of the changes that CAE recommended, so we just added in blue, um, referring to our suspension policy. CAE suggested that we did that. So this is just a tweak from CAE suggesting that we put in that, um, referred to our suspension policy. The next policy is, um, a policy that's been a couple of years in the making. It, it's our nutrition policy, policy six one four two point one oh one. In nineteen, I mean, sorry, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we convened a district-wide nutrition committee. And that committee, it was made up of parents, um, there was a SEDEXO rep on there, we had nurses, administrators, and teachers, and it went for a year and a half. And we talked about what should the nutrition policy be, what should our policy be about food in, in the schools? And what we looked at is we looked at three different things. We looked at nutrition, that was important to, to, for us to look at. We looked for allergies because we, we have an allergy program and a plan that was developed by Nita Alarcon and her committee a few years ago. We still have to be very mindful of that, you know, that's the peanut-free, nut-free tables or, or latex-free allergies. And then we did look at food coming into the building from home, that was homemade, not in original packages. So the nutrition committee put together some recommendations, um, to the policy committee and then the policy committee looked at it. And so what you're seeing now in blue is the changes. And basically what we're saying is during school hours, um, there will only be food used at the, from the recommendation or the approval of the principal. So you can't, a teacher can't say, you know what, I'm gonna have a party every week. There need, there needs to be some discussion with the school principal about when, when it's appropriate to have celebrations in the building. In the middle school, that might mean a team celebrations, um, at the high school, it could mean department celebrations, but the principal's gonna be the, the, the person that's gonna look at that. We are going to follow during the school day the healthy food snack, snack options and that's listed, I, I, there's a website there, it's listed there. Because we, we buy into the healthy food snack and we get money from the, the government because of it, we are going to use those healthy food snack options for anything that happens during the school day. That takes into account nutrition, it takes into account, um, allergies to some degree and it also is packaged food, it's nothing coming from home that's not packaged. So we're gonna look, we looked at that during the school day. Then we talked about field trips and we said, really, we can't be responsible, the school can't be responsible for students' food choices on field trips. We can make recommendations, but because a field trip could be with a group of students, we are not going to touch that. So we're saying that on field trip, the district's not responsible for students' food choices. We want parents to take care of that. Fundraisers, same as it is right now, you can't distribute the food fundraisers in school. And then finally, after school, we are not following the, we don't need to and we're not following the healthy food options list, but we're saying after-school activities, the foods need to be in the original packages and not homemade. And there's a lot of reasons for that, uh, we could discuss it if you'd like, but the committee kind of really talked about that, that we want to make sure our food is safe, we don't know about cleanliness of kitchens, we don't know about food allergens, that cross-contamination, things like that. So that's the policy. And the blue is the addition, the red is what we crushed out of our old policy and then the rest of the policy stays.
Great. Thank you. These will come up for, um, a second review and a vote at our next board meeting. All right. Does anybody have anything else before we move on to adjournment?
Just, just a comment, now that you've adopted the Board of Ed budget, Gabby will get to work at showing the, the line item changes in this and we'll have that document all prepared in a couple of days.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, thank you. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.